It changes the consent agenda.
We'll deal with that when we get there.
Oh, timeout. Okay. We have some correspondence in our open forum. Is there any comments or observations or discussion about this? I would, in any detail, I guess I would ask. Mike Williams, he has any comments on this? What do we need to know?
Well, we did this a little, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, we did this a little differently. As you see, and we did this one time before with the open forum. We just encouraged them to write to me or to the board and I would, and I tell them that I would make sure that I entered it into the record. Under normal circumstances, if this person was before you, you would refer this to, you know, appropriate staff. I frankly don't, still don't have a total understanding of all the issues involved here, but we will certainly take a look at the correspondence and he's, and this gentleman has sent more than one correspondence and staff has talked to him on a number of occasions. We'll follow through and bring, bring a report back to the board about his request for this survey.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments by board members? Any comments by board members on this? If not...
Is this what you forwarded a while ago?
I think I did forward something to you a while ago, yes. And then again, after we kind of worked through it a little bit and him wanting to address the board, we did it this way. So then you see the last, that is the last correspondence that he sent to me. And in the meantime, I didn't realize that that's really what he wanted. So anyway, so now it's on the record in the open forum.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Any other questions by board members?
Mr. Chair, you're muted.
Okay, any other, any other comments by board members? If not, can we move on to the consent agenda? There, I have heard that folks would, well, if one board member would like to... Remove, item number five? If that's, if that's the understanding of the balance of the board? Could we have a motion to approve the consent agenda with item number five pulled? Is that my understanding?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to pull item number two as well.
Okay, alright, alright. We can pull six, how about the rest of them?
Six or number two? Number two? Number two, not six.
Okay, I'm confused. What's your game plan, gang? You want number two pulled, you want number five pulled, is that right? And you want the board to have our own public hearing on those two items? Is that where we're going?
Well, it's us going to public hearing. I don't know if Commissioner Persky just wanted to hear some more information about it or what, but right, that's what we're approving, is it going to public hearing?
Yeah, I'd like to just have a few questions answered on number two before we approve moving to the public hearing.
Alrighty, can we approve then items number? Three? Three. Four? Four. Seven, eight, nine? Can you live with that?
I'll move it, but in one as well, right? We have to prove our minutes, I think?
Yep, including number one.
Okay, yes, I'll move that.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Did somebody actually want number six pulled or not? Or was that just a mistake?
I don't know. I don't know.
I don't think anybody wanted six pulled.
Alright, alright, alright. Then do you want to amend your motion, Cheryl? Cheryl, we, Cheryl, you're not on.
So I'll amend my motion to remove number two for discussion and approve the remainder.
And number five? Steve? Number five, you're the guy, send me an email.
Okay, so then, Steve, do you want to make the motion so that we got it right? I'll second.
I'll approve the consent agenda with the exceptions of item two and five.
Okay, we got something that makes sense. Alright, and we got a second. All those in favor say aye. District one?
Aye.
Two? Two.
Aye.
Three? Three. Aye. Four ayes. Five? Five. That was easy. That was easy. Okay. And the two items that we pulled, do we want to have our own public hearings on those?
Item number two is the setting of a public hearing. I think Commissioner Persky got a question.
Okay, Joe, what's your question?
Yeah, I was just concerned about putting this on for a public hearing on property tax abatement. Just in my experience in the last four years of being on the board here, I don't recall us actually having an abatement hearing, you know, for that, for that purpose. So I'm wondering what makes this necessarily that any different from the ones in the past? You know, we've seen expansions of businesses throughout the county and, you know, they weren't qualifying for the abatements, you know, and in particular Cold Spring Granite, you know, or Cold Spring Brewery and Beverage, you know, put on their large expansion there and they didn't come and ask for abatement. I believe it was asked perhaps, but it didn't come to us for the bus company in St. Joe and we didn't grant them even the request for the abatement hearing. And just with property taxes in general, you know, the hardware stores pay it, the subway pays it, the insurance agent pays it, the grocers pay it, and by not making it equitable for everybody to be paying it, it puts a burden on those businesses that are paying it. I just question why we would be moving forward with this abatement. So first of all, Randy, do we, have we done abatements here in the last four years? Have I missed any?
Right now, the only one we're paying on is Center Square Parking Lot ramp downtown and the Articat that we've finished paying a couple of years ago. And there was two abatements that you've recently turned down or the committee has recommended you turn down in the board follow suit. And that is the Trobeck's bus expansion that you talked about. There also was an assisted living expansion in St. Joe that also did not make it through the process. But you were correct, Joe, that it is a very narrow path to get an abatement. Right now, we're paying currently on one. And they all do go to public hearing if they need to be approved.
If I might just add, you know, not, not every expansion project requests abatement. Sometimes an expansion will use tax increment financing, which has a similar effect on our taxes, but we do not have a say in that necessarily. And so Cold Spring Granite may very well have used tip, I don't know, or Cold Spring Brewing, I mean, but, and the committee, we have the tax committee, tax abatement committee, and we applied this, the board's policy to this request and felt that it, that it met the policy, it's a countywide impact, it's a number, a large number of employees and those kinds of things, that something like the Trobeck bus did not meet those requirements. And so that one, we recommended that it not go through and then it didn't even come to the board at that point. And that, frankly, that, that request, we knew that, that development was going to occur. It was already under construction and that's of course, the first thing that you want to consider is whether or not it's really needed to make sure that the, the expansion happens in strange.
So I'm wondering, as the newest member, and I did get a chance to talk to Randy, I've talked with the company as well, I mean, this is, the expansion would be for, what is it, 130 employees? I mean, we've got a pretty high bar, the three of you determined, and Steve, you're on that committee too, right? That it met that. I'm just wondering, first for the public, if you could just, I know it's in the materials, but would you mind just very quickly going through how it met that standard and what your thoughts are about that?
The expansion is, and we would require this if the board wants to approve it, we would require that they, that they document that they have at least 130 additional jobs when this project is done and that they're being paid the livable wage according to deed. It's a 50,000 square feet addition and actually, most of the expenditures for this addition are for equipment. And so, you know, there's nothing to abate there, that investment will be fine, you know, as, no property taxes on that. And so they requested a property tax abatement for 15 or 20 years. The committee, we thought that 10 years was enough and that, and it's a, would be an abatement of 75% of the taxes. So there would still be an incremental increase in what the county and all taxing, all three entities receive for the, for the length of the, the abatement. And so we felt that with that amount of investment and that number of employees, that, that it met the, met the guidelines within the...
Clarify for the public, they continue to pay their current property taxes and then they would pay an additional 25% of what the value is for up to 10 years? Is that the increase, the increase in the value?
Yeah, the increase in the property value will, will be limited to $4 million. So that's the only amount that the taxes will be abated on, if, you know, if it goes through as, as the committee has recommended. So it'd be 75% on only $4 million worth of property and of course, they have much more than $4 million worth of property at their location now.
Yeah, and if I can just add to it, you know, we had a lengthy discussion, you know, because it is a big corporation, that's kind of probably why we shortened the abatement period and put extra stip, you know, the stipulation was they have to show this extra 130 net, you know, because obviously they said some jobs might go away, but the net is an increase of another 130 employees, you know, in the Cold Spring area. So, you know, again, it goes to a public hearing, which, you know, the public can weigh in on for our final decision. Yeah, we spent quite a bit of time going through the numbers and before we reached this conclusion.
The city is going to consider, actually hold their hearing this evening in the, in the school district on September 28th. And so we'll know what both the city and the school district has done before you take action.
Okay, Steve, I appreciate you folks doing your work, also Mike. Again, I just find it difficult maybe to move that forward myself, just knowing that, you know, we've got quality workers here in this area and we also have the production of agriculture for their, their product, both the feed and the animals as well. And it just seems that, well, if corporate has the opportunity to get an abatement, of course they'll ask for it. But, but by all means, they probably could just as well go, move forward with the project without the abatement as well. And again, if, if we do charge property tax to businesses, you know, all businesses should be, you know, providing, you know, fairly to, you know, pay their fair share, if, if people think taxes are fair. So, alright.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, you know, this is just to set the public hearing, I mean, it'd still be, I mean, it's not approved at this point, so.
Right, okay.
So, we're...
I'll move item two. I'll move item two on the agenda.
Okay, and we are pulling two and five to iterate.
So you're moving to move forward the public hearing on number two, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, alrighty. All those in favor say aye. Just pick one.
Aye.
Two? Two.
Aye.
Three? Three. Aye. Aye. For number four, Steve?
Aye.
Okay, that was easy. By the way, during the discussion, I forgot, I was gonna ask, in what timeframe do they, are they given to produce those jobs? Is it 20 minutes? 20 minutes? Two years? Three years? Anybody know?
I don't think that we talked very specifically about that, but we just assumed that once the project is complete, that they should, that they should be employing those people. The type of payment really would occur until the 2022 tax year.
2022, okay, alrighty. I do know other abatement conversations, the timeframe for the added jobs, wasn't contentious, but it was clarified. But one crisis at a time. Okay, and are we doing anything on five?
Yeah, I guess I, first of all, I'm really curious of the whole conversation and secondly, I guess I would like to maybe set our own public hearing to get. I'd like to get from the finance commissioner.
Okay, make, make, make the motion. I really don't want to get into the discussion.
So I'll make a motion on this now. So, alrighty. I'll make a motion for public hearing for item five, which is the solar farm.
Thank you. Thank you, Steve. Do we have a second on that? Great, alright. There isn't any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. District one?
Aye.
Two? Two.
Aye.
Three? Three. Aye. Four? Four. Aye. Steve? Steve?
Aye.
Alright. My fear was, is that we're gonna get into the detail to justify the public hearing and that would have been, well, it wouldn't have been the 47th time I got walked through this, but I've heard about this before, so. Appreciate your cooperation, gang. Alright. Alright. The, I guess we'd be ready for the, oh, oh, we got number nine done, alright. The human services board? Consent items? Somebody want either detail or make a motion on the consent items for human services?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I have a few items to share with you on this, on the second, on the second item, I guess, or the first item. So I have two items on the consent agenda today. The second item is on D2 on page 890 and it's just the claims paid on behalf of human services. The first item is D1 on page 87 and it's a letter that the Human Services Advisory Committee and members of the mental health task force wanted to share with us for informational purposes only and it's related to payment for mental health service providers for Medicare recipients. The group worked really hard on this, wrote a letter and it addresses Medicare regulations that do not allow certain mental health professionals to bill for their services once a person qualifies for Medicare and it creates barriers for people who turn age 65 or who have been certified disabled for two years simply because they're on Medicare. So there's a bipartisan bill that was introduced in the senate and the house during the last session, which was called the Mental Health Access Improvement Act. It was not passed at that time, but the Human Services Advisory Committee wanted to send information to the board and to our legislative contingent offering support for this bill and wanted the board to be aware of the issue. And I am available for questions, should you have any?
Any questions on this item?
No, I just want to reinforce the, the two groups did a lot of work on this. It's something that should be changed. It is, it really hurts seniors and so really appreciate the, the two advisory boards being willing to move forward with this and their work, because they're the ones that brought it forward.
Okay, thank you. This isn't, both items in the human services board are informational. Do we have any other questions for Melissa? If not, we can move on then to administration.
Thank you.
You're welcome, Melissa.
They need to take a motion on those items.
Okay, somebody want to move those? Cheryl, you want to move those?
Sure, so moved.
Alright, do you have a second?
I'll second those two items.
Thank you, Joe. All those in favor say aye. District one? District two? Aye. Three? Three. Aye. Four? Four. Aye. Five?
Aye.
Alright. Under administration, Aaron is gonna get a lead up and give us an update on COVID-19. So we can go from there. Take it away, Aaron.
I see she's, are we on here?
Good morning.
Hi, Aaron.
I'm Erin Tufti from Emergency Management. Good morning, commissioners. I have been asked to provide a brief update in regards to our response to COVID-19. So just a couple of quick things. We continue to work on our case investigation and contact tracing, or what we refer to as CICT. This will be a limited time that we move forward as the state has developed a regional model and we'll begin doing that and we will turn that process over to them. And we are working with schools and continue to do so, both K-12 as well as higher education. And we have two staff that are working with them moving forward as some of the situations they're experiencing are developing into a little bit more complex discussions. And we as well continue with essential services, primarily in the delivery of food and some medical supplies like masks to individuals who have tested positive. And we also reactivated portions of the emergency operations center, just to be able to have a little bit better collaborative environment in which we can have these discussions, making decisions on how we're going to continue to support the community. And as well are continuing to have discussions in partnership with Centra Care as well. As we move into flu season, need to have those discussions as well. And we continue to be engaged with them as our primary health provider in this area. As you may have noticed in looking at our dashboard, we have had an uptick in cases over the last week or so. If you look back to the week of the 14th of September, we averaged 29, 26 cases a day. Over the last week or so, we're seeing much higher numbers, 42 cases, 44 cases. And we had one day this week, this last week of 58 cases. So, and we are seeing an uptick in those numbers across the county. This is not in one specific area or expecting one, affecting one specific population, this really is across the board, all areas of the county, all demographics, all ages. So we want to continue to remind people to wear their mask and do that social distancing and then stay home if they're ill. And I can certainly answer any questions you might have, or Dr. Williams, you have anything else you'd like me to cover?
Board members, do you have any thing that you want to clarify for Aaron?
Mr. Chair? A couple of questions. I was just wondering how many people applied for the CAREs? Do we have a rough idea about how many folks had applied for those funds?
Commissioner Persky, we'll give you a little bit of a report on that with the next agenda item.
So then what about the universities? Do we have anything from the universities as far as issues?
Yes, our school representatives are working with all of the universities, colleges and universities throughout the county. We are seeing an uptick in cases unfortunately with St. Cloud State and St. Ben's and St. John's. And so we continue to have those discussions and offer that partnership along with our healthcare community to make sure we're addressing those campuses.
Okay. Any other questions for Aaron?
Yeah, just real quickly, I mean, I, thank you, thank you for the, the work that, that staff's doing with our schools. Obviously, we've seen some challenges within the K-12 system as well and know that those can be complicated, so thank you for that. Can you just tell us what, I don't think it's on the, the dashboard looks wonderful, so thank you. What's our, what's our rate? Like, what is our, our rate at this point? Not the number of cases, but our rate?
Are you looking for the positivity rate or the case counts for the schools?
I was thinking about the first, if you are able to share the second without creating challenges, that would be interesting as well.
Yes, absolutely. So I can get the case count, that is projected each week. I can certainly provide that. So it's been around 19 for the schools and the positivity rate has been about 8% for Stearns County.
Okay, alright, so a little bit higher, certainly higher than we want, but not as significant as other areas. But everybody needs, we just all need to keep working on this, even though it's not fun. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Aaron, I have a question. I was wondering if the uptick in positive cases corresponds with an increase in the number of tests given?
You know, that is a fantastic question. We continue to see testing being done in a variety of places, pharmacies and clinics, as well as hospitals. I'm not aware of any increase in testing efforts that are taking place right now in Stearns County. We do know that there are some coming. Moving forward, we have some additional testing kits coming to this area and additional programs. I can certainly find out if we have seen any increased testing, but as of right now, we're kind of holding steady with the trend of people that we're seeing tested when they're symptomatic and then those test results coming back, but I can certainly look into that and provide you with some follow-up.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Alright, any other questions for Aaron? Obviously got a pretty good grip on what's happening to us. If not, thank you, Aaron. I guess we could move on to our CARES Act discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll just quickly remind the board that we have a number of programs going in the, in the use of the CARES Act. Remember you have a small business relief program and we'll get a little bit of an idea how that's going today with, from Sarah. We have, that includes the smaller nonprofits, then we have the large nonprofit assistance, we have the assistance to the schools, we have assistance to individuals and families, we have the small city assistance, and then we have our own internal costs. And what Sarah's gonna walk us through is kind of a list of projects that, that we've, we've determined as eligible projects with CARES Act dollars that we can, that we can get done before the December deadline. And then at your next meeting, the first meeting in October, the plan can bring you back kind of a full report on how all of these programs are going, how much we've allocated, because I don't think we're gonna hit some of these numbers that the board has, has approved. But anyway, expect a much more thorough report at your next meeting, but Sarah can give you a little bit of idea how the small business relief program is going and then hopefully seek from the board to start these projects, because we're a little concerned that something, they're gonna be, it's more than gonna be difficult to get done before the deadlines, but, but we think we can get them done, so. Go ahead, Sarah.
Alright, good morning, Commissioner Sarah, which Finance Director. To answer Commissioner Persky's question this morning, we had over 430 business, small business and nonprofits apply for our program. And so we're collaborating closely with each of the cities as most of them are administered. And so we're collaborating closely with each of the cities as most of them are administering their own program and the county is helping them with that funding. So, um, over 430 businesses, 160 of those were in St. Cloud and over 270 were in the rest of the county. Uh, we did have a maximum per business of 15,000, so we will do all kinds of metrics and statistics by location and by business type at your next meeting. Moving on to the agenda item that I have before you today, I had a, a short memo, a tab, uh, starting on packet page number 93 and then two pages that kind of detailed at a high level, some of the projects which the department leadership team put together and the budget committee reviewed. Uh, the three criteria that these items must meet to be CARES eligible is that they were reasonably necessary due to the public health emergency, they weren't in the county's 2020 budget, and that we can receive the goods or services on or before December 1st. So this list of projects is pretty comprehensive and uh the departments will work together with procurement, building facilities and information services to see that they can do them by December 1st. So today I'm available to answer any questions you have on any of the projects or clarify any items and then request that the board approve this listing so departments can go ahead and begin procuring these items.
We have questions by board members for Sarah?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Steve here. Could Sarah maybe just go through like the high dollar ones and just kind of give a brief overview?
Yes, I definitely can do that. Um, packet page 94, you'll see that the county has some pretty high dollar projects in the telework, improving the telework capabilities of public employees. And so with that, we're looking to um, to implement an e-signature solution. So uh, solution whereby we can sign documents electronically and pass them back and forth to, to help with the telework capabilities. The phone system upgrade has been an ongoing project and there was some money budgeted. However, this is a, a change in the project scope because of the fact that we may have more soft phones needed now because we're not in the office doing our work. So there's a bit of a change in scope with that project. The Attorney's Office Case Management System is something that is also ongoing, but there's additional funding uh above and beyond what was budgeted that would be helpful in that project as well. We have a lot of firewall, um, and e-learning and electronic um packages that we're looking to buy to just help with our remote capabilities as far as the system's firewall and security. And additional hardware items such as printers, scanners and monitors, that's to help people who are working back and forth in the office and in their home. So the county has several employees that are looking for some equipment to be able to not um haul their devices back and forth as they work in two locations. Minimal personal protective equipment as we had purchased a lot of that already early on. And then under the public health category, we're looking to expand the dispatch center. There has been some expansion done already. This would add four more 911 consoles and would um trying to put the basement of the LEC more, more um effective for social distancing measures. So building facilities will be helping with that. We're looking to add a negative pressure isolation to four holding or 11 holding cells in the jail and that would be um exhaust and duct work to help with the um virus spread and kind of containing that into certain areas. As many of you are aware, we're putting a new courtroom facility down in the basement of the admin center and so there are some hardware and security related to that that we're looking for approval to go forward on. Down below here, we have a replacement of the virtual license center. So that vendor is looking to get out of the business in that arena. And with us doing so much of our licensing services online, we're looking to replace that virtual center to allow people to do that by phone and online. Small business assistance, we're looking to help refund a fraction of the license fees that were paid to the county for the 2020 year because of the required closures. And so that, that number there I think is about, is a refund of about 50% of the fees that they paid in for their licensures. And then the, under other, we just have a couple of things relating to the service center and expanding our, our items there so that we can serve more individuals and have social distance practices in place. So that came up to a total of $3 million. That's an estimated amount and of course each project is being analyzed for what the ongoing costs and impact would be as well as if we can get these things all done by December 1st because that is a rather short turnaround.
All right, thanks, Sarah.
Yeah.
Any other uh questions or clarifications that uh you have for Sarah? I, before the COVID thing, like several months before the uh COVID situation developed, I had the opportunity to do a sit-along in the 911 center and uh clearly uh expansion and rearrangement was timely back then. If indeed it came to pass because of the COVID stuff, uh, that uh, that's appropriate justification to make something that was an obvious need already. That is a remarkable experience. Uh, if the, if the rest of my esteemed colleagues on the board have never done that, uh, if you want to learn, uh, see some experts at multitasking and action, uh, go down there and do a shift with them, uh, that's uh, remarkable. So, anything else? Well, if not, uh, if that clarifies uh and explains things for us, uh, uh, I guess uh, we need a, uh, we need action on this, yeah. Uh, we need to approve the list, so. Somebody want to make a motion to approve the list while I'm trying to figure out where I am in life?
I, I will move that. I agree with you, Lee. If people haven't gotten a chance to go and see, experience the dispatch, this will actually be very helpful there and they're amazing.
Do we have a second? Second would be nice.
Okay.
Thank you, Steve. All those in favor say aye, district one.
Aye.
Two.
Aye.
Three.
Aye.
Four, aye. Five.
Aye.
Thank you, Steve. All right. Takes care of uh, uh, Sarah's clarification. Uh, the uh, the next item is uh, to talk about the 2021 preliminary budget and property tax levy. And we have a uh, four folks to uh, uh, talk about that, uh, Mike, Steve, Randy and Sarah. Uh, take it away, somebody. Don't all talk at once.
I believe Mike is going to cover this issue when he gets on.
I'm sorry. I started talking, I started talking, but I was muted. So, thank you. Um, I direct your attention to page 102 in the package, which I also have on the screen here. As this is uh, this is the time for the board to approve the preliminary budget and levy. And as you know, we're required to do that at this time of year before the end of the month and then hold our public hearing. Um, and I believe it's the first Tuesday in December this year. And um, at that time you would adopt a final levy. So this is the maximum that the, the board can approve for a levy for 2021. From this day forward, you can lower that levy, but you cannot increase it. And so what's being proposed here is a, is, is a, a total budget that actually is a, a reduction in total expenditures of 0.7%. A reduction in revenues of uh about two and a quarter percent, uh, a use of fund balance of half a million dollars and then a tax levy change of 1.5%. And we've been through this um previously and uh there's, there's the, the quick little summary there. You can see what this will do to the property tax rate. It will uh again go down and the property tax rate will decrease by 3.67%. And this, this levy of an increase of one and a half percent is actually underneath the, underneath the, the amount of real growth in the property tax base. So new construction and decertified TIFs um are actually increasing the, the property tax base by 1.85% and this increase is 1.5%. So ultimately, ultimately you will see um pretty much as you see here, a, a decrease in, in every property classifications, uh, taxes due and um. And I even uh, I noted here that uh, the Railroad Authority, which is, you know, which is really a county levy basically, um, that is going to decrease by $38,000 and another countywide levy, the HRA levy increased by 8,160. So actually to calculate those into this total levy, uh, we actually are, are going to see a decrease of 1.44%, which is not in any of the, any of the tables that we've shown other than, other than right here, but um, they, they really do make up part of that whole, that whole tax. And so um, your next actions, I uh. The public hearing, as I said, uh, would be held on, I think it's the first of December actually, and then the board needs to adopt the final levy by on December 15th. As you can see, as I wrote here, as I'm hopeful about we can make some changes to reduce the, the what's being proposed here and, and really consider it the maximum. We've, the budget committee has talked about maybe even using some additional fund balance or making some other changes in, in the budget to, to reduce that. But with as much as we don't know right now about how things are going to look, look uh in 2021, we just weren't comfortable um bringing, bringing those forward to you today. We're comfortable with uh this pretty minor increase in the levy that at least reduces taxes on, on pretty much every property, property owner in, in the county. And so um before you today with that short introduction is this resolution that would adopt the total budget of 164,530,000 dollars in that tax levy. An increase of 1.49%. And I have the whole budget committee here if anybody has any questions for any of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Randy, Sarah, uh, Steve, uh, any added comments?
Oh, I, I think Mike covered it pretty well.
Okay, all right. Could you scroll back to the last screen? Time out. Whoop.
That one?
No, it's too far. Little, uh, next actions, let's, let's get that part up. Okay. Yeah, you got uh, did it, did it, did it, what did I know? Notice of the public hearing, truth and taxation hearing to be held on December 31st. Uh, it's kind of late, huh?
Yeah.
Or is that screw up? Uh, what's going on here?
I, now, I, is it November, is it the end of November, the first of December?
I'm supposed to come in here on New Year's Eve? I mean, come on. You know, I'm saying you're going to ask us for each of us is a quart of blood?
We'll have, we'll have, you know, you have this streamers and December 1st and uh, we're not going to start editing it, December 1st.
Ah, somebody got happy fingers there, huh?
Yep.
All righty, well, must have been a clerk because the four of you would never do anything like that.
Excellent. I think it was pointed out to me, I made the change and somehow this is the wrong document.
They made a mental note and lost your notes. Okay. Uh, okay, I saw that and I thought, boy, they're taking advantage of the system. Anyway, uh, well, I guess we're supposed to be adopting a resolution on this. Uh, uh, somebody want to make that motion?
Mr. Chair, I'll move it, uh, you know, being it's just adopting the preliminary and then if I get a comment, we'll get to the discussion.
Okay.
I will second.
Okay, and Terrell, is that a second?
Yeah.
Thank you. What's your comments, Steve?
Well, you know, I think we're, you know, as commissioners and, you know, administration, you know, I think one thing we're going to have to be careful of or monitor is next year, you know, if there is a shift in, you know, who starts paying the property taxes, you know, with commercial issues with COVID, um, you know, and, you know, farming, farm values have been relatively flat and some areas declining, you know, is there going to be a shift in that tax burden moreover to the residential again, you know, which is going to add more pressure on the residential tax side, which then disproportionately affects, you know, people who rent and maybe can't afford owning their own home. You're, you're the expert in this area, Lee, so.
If the, if the residential rate stays the same and the values of residential properties go up, taxes go up.
Right.
End of story. So, uh, I guess that'd be the, the way to summarize that situation. And with, you know, it goes back to our discussion at the last meeting, uh, with interest rates where they're at, uh, residential real estate, despite the fact that uh, there are some, obviously some employment issues with the current situation. Residential market is uh certainly healthy. It's uh, things are happening. So um, that's, yeah, you, you don't need uh a 220 volt crystal bulb to see that where things are going. Our, the ones that the county issues us, the 110 volt models will uh, uh, be just fine for that projection. Any other questions? I'm not making fun of you, Steve. I'll make fun of you sometime later. When we go off line, I'll make fun of you.
This is Jeff. Yes. Just to expand on Steve a little bit, normally I would, I would support this, just keeping it at uh whatever the increase in, in values produce, but uh, this year I think we really, really have to look at keeping the, our levy at zero just because of what Steve was talking about how that can change. And uh, I've got articles saying that Ramsey County and Hennepin County are both projected to, to has fallen away to do a 0% levy increase. So, you know, I'm, I'm not going to support this, but normally this would be, I would support this in a normal year.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Any other comments before we uh, uh, vote? If not, uh, all those in favor say aye, district one.
Aye.
District two.
Aye.
District three.
Aye.
District four, aye. District five.
Aye.
All right. Now we're to.
Mr. Chair, I got, I got a question. And it, you had mentioned about interest rates as far as that spurring the uh, the growth in residential or at least keeping that market alive. I'm sure administration has done that, but uh, have we squeezed the interest rates as low as we can? Just Mike, are, are, is there anything we can refinance with the low interest rates now or have we done as much as we can in that point?
Randy, Sarah, Mike, uh, what's your perspective on this?
Interest rates have been low for a while, so we, we have always looked at our debt service and um, our debt service is getting to the end for most of our issues. So we are retiring debt here every year, so there's not a lot left and, and I think the ones that are left, we'd be ready to refinance. So um, we continually take a look at those and that's a good question, so.
Yeah, there's such a short, you know, a short timeframe left that the cost of, cost to reissue would be more than we would say at this point.
All right. Any other? Any other, any other questions, clarifications here? The, that is a, a good thing to keep your eye on because it, I do take in King Banyan's quarterly presentation on the central Minnesota economy. And based on comments by the Federal Reserve, the prediction is, is that interest rates will stay at their current level for two years. So the, in the discussion that we had at the last meeting about should we be borrowing and taking advantage of the low interest rates, accelerating some of our capital expenditures? Now, without a doubt, prudence is our guide in terms of borrowing for operating capital. But borrowing for hard assets, long-term assets, if it ever makes sense now would be the time, but that's the end of the editorial. It's just, we can talk about this sometime like our next retreat, whether or not, hope you bring it up.
Mr. Chair, we, we do intend to bring that up. You know, we had a capital improvement program that we have since all the, since the pandemic, we reevaluated that and I think we'll be prepared to bring that back to you at your next meeting. So we'll talk about.
Oh, next meeting. Okay. All right.
Mr. Chair, as long as Mike mentioned that, so is there a way you'll be able to compare, you know, obviously the building materials costs, you know, have gone up quite a bit. So even though you got low interest rates, your net savings might not be as great as one would think. It'd be interesting to have that comparison of what the original cost estimate was versus what the projected new cost estimate would be even with a low interest rate.
Yeah, interest rates and property values tend to move in opposite directions anyway. When interest rates are low, more people are competing for similar properties and values go up. So, yep, that's a good point, Steve. Anything else? You know, it's always fun to pretend we're amateur economists. Issues by commissioners. District One.
Thank you. I thank, thanks staff for all the work the Budget Committee did on this. I mean, I, this is hard stuff. But my two things would be, and I'm guessing I'm not alone, one is to remind people that voting started on Friday and I actually came in about 8:15 a.m. We talked about this at our last Canvas Board meeting and I think all of you know, I've been really careful about where I'm going because I've got some pretty vulnerable folks in my family that if they caught this thing, it would be disastrous. But I went in and voted downtown and if you haven't seen it, what has been done with the space is amazing. There's a lot of protection, there's a lot of space. And I thought I might be the first person voting. I was not. There were several people already in there. So want to thank all of the, you know, the temporary hires as well as our longtime ones. And then the other thing is reminding people about the census. I believe some, I think Joe might be talking about this too, but if people haven't done it and we've got some of our rural communities as well as probably some people who live within St. Cloud who haven't done it yet for whatever reason, please, please, please do it. It makes a huge difference for the funding we end up obtaining federally and statewide.
Thank you. District Two?
Yes, first of all, I appreciate all the work on the budget as well. One thing about the census, I was informed by a, a couple of individuals that, the counters that have been in the rural areas in particular, in some of our areas with Hispanic speaking individuals were not competent in the language and those households were, were missed. And with the deadline coming up here at the end of the month, I would hope that, you know, somehow we can make sure that those individuals do get counted. Very disappointing because, you know, we talked in April and May, and I know Shelley had helped with this too, as far as recruiting folks that, that have those language skills to get out in those areas. But when, when it actually happened, there were, the people that were placed in those areas spoke only English and did not even have the, the Spanish forms available to the people. So if we can do anything to get out to the whole community, that would be greatly appreciated with the few days we have left. Also, I, I just a general concern, you know, the high schools have now voted to go back with football and volleyball. You know, that opens the door for more contact with people. I just hope people are a little bit more conscious about being safe wearing the mask because I don't want, I don't want any more setbacks. I'd like to make sure that we get through this COVID thing, so that's all I got.
District Three?
I have nothing.
You don't have anything? Okay. District Four, thank you, Jeff. District Four, recently, very recently in local news, Mike Zenzin, who's the mayor of St. Augusta and also the commander of the American Legion in St. Augusta, announced that the American Legion in St. Augusta will not be televising NFL football until further notice. Don't have to go into any detail about the controversy surrounding the military and NFL games, but that's the symbol, symbolic action they took on the local level. And it, it caught everyone's eye. I have to say that, well, granted, in the big picture, maybe it doesn't have an impact, but the reality is a local statement doesn't hurt. So that, I, that was a pretty good, I wish I'd have thought of that. Good job, Mike. District Five?
Definitely in Stearns County because there's, there's mutual names because Mike Zenzin I know runs Harry's Pizza in El Rosa. So you see, you know, that's another name that's multiple. The one thing I wanted to bring up, you know, I sit on the board of TriCap, you know, on behalf of the Stearns County. TriCap right now, you know, they're short a couple of board members. One was, you know, Rose Johnson, obviously from Big Lake that passed away a couple of months ago. But for Stearns County, they, we need another elected official to be on that board from Stearns County, which, you know, can be a mayor or city councilperson or, you know, anyone. So just, just putting the word out there to kind of help Lori, you know, recruit somebody beyond that board.
Okay, Steve, since, since you have to, since you have to live with whoever would get appointed, be looking for you to make some, make a suggestion, that'd be okay?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, if you can do it.
We no longer have a say in this, just saying, because I originally was going to go on when Dwayne left, they've got a process, but they do need one and it's a great organization. And I have to admit, I haven't applied, but it's all changed. We, we actually don't have Stearns County quote unquote reps anymore, but they do need good people in Stearns County.
What's the process then? Charles, Steve?
Apply. Apply.
Give them a call or go to their website and you can apply online.
Okay. Okay.
You know, and like most, most businesses, you know, they're looking for, you know, bus drivers for the transit, you know, there's a lot of openings. But it'd be nice to get the, you know, Stearns County elected official on that board.
Okay. All right. We are now going to go, if there's, if there are no more items by commissioners, we're going to go into closed session because of attorney-client privilege pursuant to Minnesota statutes, 13D.05 subdivision 3B to discuss pending litigation and/or enforcement relating to May 5th, 2020, after the fact shore land alteration permit denial. Yes? Somebody have to comment?
Yes, if you just give the staff in the back room a minute to mute everybody and make sure that we're not broadcasting, so just maybe take a little bit of a break and then we'll do the same.
That's ideal.
And then come back, when you come back, after the closed session, we'll kind of do the same thing. We'll need a minute or two to get back on broadcasting.
Great timing. I'm gonna take a bathroom break. See you later. Great timing. I'm gonna take a bathroom break. See you later.
I feel good, Dan.
Great, thanks everybody.
Yeah, thank you, Chad.
Thanks, Chad.
Sorry we did this to you.
Okay, they're ready.
Great. Okay, uh, someone want to make a motion, uh, to take the recommended action in this particular situation?
It's... Are you looking for the motion?
That's the idea.
Do, do we have to state what the motion is?
Uh, Dr. Willie, what's... It'll be published, you know.
I'll make the motion, but you know, for...
I think what...
Or staff, you want to summarize the motion?
I think what chair, Mr. Chair, I think what you said is fine if, if you, uh, make a motion to, to, uh, take the recommendation, take the recommendation is fine.
Okay.
He'll go in the minutes as whatever it is, but you can make it that way.
Sounds good. Don't move.
All right, we have a second. Do we have a second?
Reluctantly, I will second.
Alrighty, thank you. Uh, I think this horse is dead. All those in favor say aye. District one?
Aye.
Two?
Nay.
Three? Aye. Four, aye.
Aye.
Five?
Aye.
I was trying to forget Steve, but I failed. Uh, all right, well, uh, that concludes our agenda and, uh, on, you know, another chapter and as the stomach turns, so, uh, thanks a lot folks. This, uh, went better than I anticipated.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
Yeah?
See you everybody.
Bye.
Bye.